Yeah, it's true.
I don't want to mutter, right? We don't mutter.
Is that why you carry the really long cord and that rotary phone?
It is not taking my password.
Remember them big brick phones? I showed it to everybody.
With the one...
Well, in a suitcase.
Back phone? The back phone, right?
They were like holding a brick up to your head.
We were doing...
There it went.
We're doing the eighteen...
They, whatever happened with the Wi-Fi, when Josiah switched to Wi-Fi, it's...
You know why they don't use it?
No.
They reach Australia.
I don't understand.
It's unpredictable, for sure.
You don't have to use a saddle. You can just go straight.
Something about like the way the Wi-Fi is set up, but it's not...
So airplanes flying through your zone are picking up your...
Well, I mean, we were the first ones to get cell phones in our kitchens. And be able to say yes or no quicker. Paying money. The only problem is, when I got my first bill, I quit. Like I'd go home, get in the driving car, and I'm not going to drive. That quit.
When you said yourself...
Are you guys all hooked up?
Do you want to sit?
Oh, okay.
I'm not signed in.
Oh, okay. Do you want me to wait?
Nope.
Okay.
This is a work session.
Okay. The time has come, six oh one, I'll call the work session to order, and I will turn the floor over to you. Stephanie?
Thank you. I just want to start and tell everyone, sorry, I'm going to give a little speech, but just thank you for the opportunity to have worked here at the city. This will be my council meeting in this capacity. But I am just really grateful for the opportunity of working with each of you, and extremely grateful for working with all of the staff here. Sorry, I'm tear up, but I am honored to work with such wonderful people. Just thank you for that. I appreciate that. I'm excited for this opportunity to get to almost, hopefully to completion tonight with the policy. This was my task on day one when I started with the city. And it's been, we've gone through multiple revisions and changes, and I think we've come up with a fantastic product. I'm grateful for your input as council to be able to get this to the best we can possibly be. It'll never be perfect, that's, things change over time, but just grateful that we have such a great product. I'm excited that we've had that opportunity to work together to get this done. And hopefully, as it goes off to legal, that we can get it for the employees. It's kind of that one thing that everyone's so anxious to be able to accomplish and get it, get it in place. And just appreciate your time that you've put in to read and go through it and ask questions and revise it and help us through that process. Grateful for that. So, all right. So tonight's process, I had sent an email earlier a couple of weeks ago, just asking if there's anything that you guys want me to focus on. Otherwise, I can just pitch things. I just want to make sure that we're able to get through it tonight as much as we can and then get it off to legal before, on the next step, move on to the next step. So is there anything that you guys want me to focus on, or do you want me to just jump right in?
There was, there was one thing that I looked for, and it doesn't mean it's not there, and plain as day, but I couldn't find it. And when we were discussing the way that days off, vacation days, comp time, that sort of thing, where the fire department and the police department were treated, I realized that a lot of things were different with those two particular employees, but they were treated so differently. Like if they worked a holiday or whatever, they didn't get extra time or whatever. Was that addressed? Because I, I looked for that in the modified one, which I left at home, wonderful, and I could not find that. And if it was addressed, would you tell us about that?
Yep, absolutely, absolutely. So I actually put together an entirely new leave section, and actually printed it out last time, I think it was, but it is under here.
Did we get that last time?
Yes, yes.
It's in the appendix, is it not, Stephanie? Or did it get, made it into the leave section?
Yeah, there's two.
Sorry.
Yeah. Jared's here, and we, this is the part we talked about so long, which is because police are so different and fire. So I did put it in here. Uniquely different. That's a good thing. So I did put it in here, and we'll kind of go through that. So we'll just kind of talk through this one, if that's okay?
Sure.
Rather than the other one.
I just know that wasn't fair.
Yeah.
Didn't seem fair to really any of us, I don't think.
Yeah. So I'll have you pull up the other one. So go out of there and go down to council revision proposals and leave benefits. Yep. So that's what this one is. So what we did in here, so if you go through, go down to the sick leave accrual portion, right there. So sick leave, we kept the accruals the same. The reason being for that is that police and fire individuals, they are always out into emergency situations. And they may need more time for their mental health, for sick, those types of things. And so we did leave that as a higher accrual. So they accrue, the officers and dispatchers accrue ten hours per month. Uniform fire are ten hours per month, and others are eight. That is why there's a difference there. And we kept that the same as it was last time. We didn't change any of that from the previous policy, if that makes sense. Now, if you go down on the bottom, I did, oh, where there was yellow, sorry. On the accrual limits, we did talk about that high accrual limit. Remember last time, we were talking about why it was fourteen, forty hours? I did go out to WHAM and did a WHAM Blast is what they call it, where it just goes, asks certain questions to everyone who's a part of WHAM. Across the state, most people have lower limits, so it's very consistent with the county. So that's something you can think about changing if you wish in the future. That's up to you. Currently, ours is at fourteen, forty. The county is at four eighty for sick leave. So that's a decision you guys would need to make. That's where our limits are currently. We didn't change that, so, but just so that you're aware, that's where it's at. The four eighty is consistent with the twelve weeks of F M L A leave. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So that is, like I said, a council decision. Okay? Go down to vacation. We'll talk about vacation. Okay. So this is the portion, this red portion, we updated from the other policy. So the proposal that we had talked about was to change the holiday schedule so that all city employees are paid on the holiday for the holiday, if that makes sense? And if they work, they get paid, and we'll go through this in a minute, time and a half, for that working time plus the holiday pay. Does that make sense? So it actually ends up being double time and a half for those eight hours, if that makes sense? And so with that, that changes these vacation accruals, because prior, in our old policy, police and fire were accrued vacation at a faster rate to make up for the holidays that they weren't given. So they were only given six holidays a year, and they had a higher accrual rate to make up for those days. So that, since we changed the holiday, that also changed this vacation accrual to be the same as everyone else, because they get paid for the holiday the same as everyone else. Does that make sense, Jared? I didn't go through this with you prior to. So that's something that council can choose to go with, if that's where, where you want to go. I kept it separate because I didn't want, I wanted that to be a choice for, for council to choose. That's why I have the two, if that makes sense. Questions on that?
Are all of those vacation accruals the same as they were?
As they were.
Okay.
I didn't change, they're all the same as they were before. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Looks similar to the state, kind of.
Yeah. Okay. So, if you want to go to...
Do we pay out the sick time? Like if they have accrued that much sick ti, sick time, six months, and then quit, or do we pay that out?
We do pay out a portion of sick time at the time when they resign or they're terminated. We pay a third for the first ten years?
Twenty years.
Twenty years, yeah, thank you. Ten years, and then after twenty years, they get a half.
Okay, thank you.
Vacation and comp time are paid out.
And they're capped.
And they are capped, yes.
Yes.
If we can on that, just to put things in perspective, the cap has always been there in city policy, at least for the twenty-two years I've worked for the city. And the policy, when we started, was adopted in ninety-six or ninety-seven. The cap was there, but the cap wasn't ever enforced on vacation time or sick time until two and a half, two years ago. So we had employees on separation that had three thousand hours, four thousand hours of sick time, and several hundred hours of vacation time that got paid out. So kind of the compromise was, we're going to, we're going to enforce the caps and continue to pay it out upon separation.
I can tell you that in the past, more than once, the city has stopped and cleaned the slate with vacation and sick, because it got way out of hand and way up above, and it...
Because the caps weren't being enforced.
They didn't enforce the use it or lose it thing. Well, both times, it was a chunk of change. It could be crippling if it happened at the wrong time. And so that's why it's so important that not only do we have caps, but we enforce them, and they're reasonable.
And then for about the last two years, those caps have been enforced.
Yeah, they have to be. Use it or lose it, I mean, it just has to be, because what was the last payout? Does anybody remember?
I was on the council, but I don't remember. But I remember it was...
Yeah, I was there.
We had, we had three or four retirements that impacted
Yes, yeah.
the city significantly.
But that one year, I think it's that...
Because of so much sick time and vacation time that those employees had on the books. They all, they all retired within the same year.
And we, but we wrote that one, at one time, wrote one check, and it was six or seven digits. It was up there. I mean, like I say, it could be crippling if it happened at the wrong time. And so it's called poor management. You can't do that.
No, I think those caps are important, and then I think it's important to continue to enforce those.
Yeah.
Or, or perspective.
Or we'll end up in a position of not being able to offer those type of benefits, we won't be able to afford them. You know, we'll have to be cutting back, and I, I don't want to do that, so...
Well, we had considerable discussion, too, just for the health of employees, it's important that they utilize their vacation time.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
For their health and their productivity within the city, so...
Yeah.
You know, if they think they have the savings account, they're going to accrue eight hundred hours of vacation time and then retire in two years. They're sacrificing their own personal health and productivity and efficiency for the city of doing that.
Changing the employees, yeah. I agree.
They're built into our system now, though, right, Tom?
Yeah.
Yeah. And one of the things we talked, because we've talked a lot about this, and one of the things we talked about was proposing this vacation buyout program to encourage people to take their vacation and utilize that vacation time. And so this is just a thought that actually Jason proposed, a place that he was at prior to, had this in place. And we've had to tweak it a little bit because of IRS rules and that kind of thing, and we still need to make sure that it, that it meets those rules. But in all my reading and all my research, I think this is the best that we can come up with. This is called a vacation buyout option. And so this is basically, this allows an individual to opt in December that during the next year, they want to take a vacation of a week's vacation and receive a payout for up to a week of a payout, to pay for that vacation, if that's what they choose, if that makes sense. It is set up to be taxed, so there are IRS guidelines that have to, have to happen with that. But that also encourages people to take their vacation and allows them to utilize the vacation time that they have on the books that may max out for them. Because we have a lot of people who've worked here a long time that are at that cap, and it's very concerning when they're not able to utilize that vacation fast enough to be able to still accrue that vacation, if that makes sense.
That is exactly the opposite of what you just got done saying.
Okay.
They should take vacation for their own
They should.
health and mental health and all that, but here's a way that we can pay them, and they don't have to take vacation. No. I don't like that. Take a vacation, that's what they're for.
And that's, and that is the option.
I understand, I understand the motivation and all that, but...
You're going to double pay them, too.
It's...
How is, if I could, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
In order to buy out that vacation, you're required to put, to submit a time off request to take vacation. So my experience, two other cities I've worked for did this. And the main reason we implemented it the first time was to limit the liability of the city, because we had a situation where HR, and the, we had a HR director who retired after like twenty years, and we didn't have a cap on vacation, we didn't have a cap on sick leave, and it, it broke us. We couldn't replace that HR position for like eight months because of the payout. So part of the reason it was implemented is to encourage vacation by saying, well, if you want to buy out a week's vacation, you have to take a week's vacation off. And then what that does over time, it lowers the accrual of vacation time across the board from the entire city, so that you don't have that one time massive buyout when people do resign or retire.
I understand, but I'll tell you what'll motivate them to use their vacation is use it or lose it. I'm serious. I mean, I have to go and, the employee should take a vacation. I don't know that we should have to, I don't know.
Yeah, it's...
I've, I've never had to beg any of my people to take a paid day off. They, I, you know, I just, I understand those accruals get up there and all that, but that's why you cap them, to keep that big expenditure you're talking about. And they just have to manage their own life and use their vacation as it comes up. And, you know, sick time's another deal, you know, where you can donate it to some other person or whatever, that's a different deal. I totally understand all of that, but I'm just not for that, just so you know.
And just another thought, just to put out there, I mean, obviously, it's up to council's pleasure, but another thought is, thinking particularly about our police department, that is very shorthanded right now, that it's very difficult for them to take time off right now. They're on mandatory overtime, have been for multiple years, just because they're so shorthanded. And yes, that's an issue that we do need to resolve over time, is something that we've struggled for many years, right there, trying to get that. And so that is a challenge, too. And so just something to think about on that side. By taking vacation, they're offsetting someone else and putting on overtime. They're just so shorthanded. That is just something that might be an option for them. Anyway, just a thought.
So we do have it, the vacation time's capped at two hundred and forty hours? Which is about thirty days?
Six weeks.
Six weeks of vacation. So you're saying to encourage people to take vacation, we pay them out, so they're using two weeks of vacation instead of the one, even though they're working one week, right? I can see that being useful, like you said, with the police department or places where you're short, because, because we're a close-knit city, and because you don't want your friends overworked, it is hard to make that decision to take the time off. But if you get paid and you're taking off, you're only leaving them for a week, but we'll get the benefit of the two weeks being taken off your accrual.
So they're shorthanded. They're going to be shorthanded that week, too.
Not one week, not two weeks.
And the other predicament that we've been in the last two and a half, three years, I've been with the city for twenty-two years now, eighteen of those as a supervisor. For the first sixteen or so years as a supervisor, I never had to deny a vacation. We're, we're short-staffed enough now that we have to tell officers, you can't have that much time off because of staffing issues. Last couple of years, two and a half, three years have been different than the previous.
How many new officers have been sworn in in the last, say, four or five years?
I, I could get you the exact count, I don't recall specifically off the top of my head.
How many of them are still here?
We've had, if you give me a second. I can think of specifically four resignations of people that didn't make it through the field training process in the last three years. We've, we've had officers that three to five years or more resign or retire, and we've had not been able to fill those positions.
What would fill them? What would fill them? Not more vacation, I'm sure, but what would, what would it take to fill them?
Well, I can tell you, a big problem we have right now is still pay inequity. When we look at comparable sized cities around the state and comparable sized departments, everyone is paying more than us.
Give me an example.
Douglas, Wyoming, just increased their starting pay to twenty-seven dollars, twenty-six ninety-five an hour.
Compared to ours is, excuse me, between them...
Twenty-one, twenty-two.
What size is Douglas?
See that?
What's the population of Douglas? I'm not trying to fry you, I'm just asking.
No, I think it's about five hundred, six thousand people.
Isn't it more?
No, it's small.
Oh. I guess I go there as State Fair, it seems you try.
Yeah. Saratoga is, you know, is another community in the county, much smaller population, a lot less workload, smaller department, and they're starting to pay as comparable to ours. The sheriff's office starting to pay as considerably lower than ours. So we're, we're losing out even within our, within our county. Highway, just about every state agency just got a decent pay raise. Highway Patrol's looking at hiring troopers with no experience, twenty-seven to twenty-eight dollars an hour.
So, and, oh, there was, I, I had it, and I lost it.
Benefits wise, we're comparable with those other agencies that we're competing with for people. So vacation leave accruals, sick leave accruals, insurance costs, one of the great benefits that we have with, as city employees, is our insurance benefits. But the difference in... But the difference in premiums that, like, for instance, again, the, the Carver County, they have to pay their, a certain amount of their healthcare premiums, but the, what they make in pay more than offsets the, the difference in starting pay.
Three times us.
So there's something we ought to look at raising the starting pay.
But if we raise the starting pay, then would that mean we lose all of the senior officers that?
You'd have to do the whole.
You'd have to raise everybody? I don't believe that, but that's why you're not gonna get new officers, because I, we can't afford to raise everybody. We can buy a tire, but we can't buy the whole Cadillac.
Right. If you can't afford to do that, then it comes down to offering them something that other places don't offer, like this.
A piece of paper?
No, the.
The vacation buyout option.
Vacation buyout option.
I, I don't know if they'd be thinking of that on the first day of work. I, they might.
I don't know, would your officers, did, did they seem to like that kind of idea?
The ones that have read it, looked at it, thought it seemed reasonable and would appreciate, especially when they got denied a week of vacation. Would appreciate at least getting paid for that week that they couldn't take off.
Yeah.
Some of the, benefits do make a difference and, and pay makes a difference. We recruited at least three officers that were lateral transferred. We haven't been able to get lateral officers frequently for a long time. In the last couple of years since we put our certification pay scale into place, where we pay for experience, we pay for instructors, we pay for field training officers, those people that have additional training and take on extra duties. It's made a difference in being able, being able to recruit lateral, lateral officers into the department that we don't have to spend near as much time training, a ten-month.
Where do they come from?
Lander, Riverton, Saratoga.
Where would they come here if they're getting paid more there? You just said Saratoga pays more, so they're.
Well, because of our, because of our certification increases that we put into place a few years ago. He was making the same as a peace officer won here, but the certification increase bumped him up and up. Once he was off probation, he got a significant pay raise. And so for the first year, he made the same rate as he was getting in Saratoga. And, and that certification increase bumped him up enough that it was worthwhile to relocate his family and come to Raleigh.
The challenge is now, a lot of other departments are starting to implement that certification pay. And so that is making it inequitable again, as we're getting lateral officers, so, yeah. So we're not able to attract as much as we had then even a year ago. So it's, it's a challenge. And officers are, it's find, hard to find officers across the country. It's something that is a huge struggle, just like nurses, a huge struggle across the, across the nation, so.
So what else was added or changed with the leave process?
So that, that vacation buyout option is something to think about. And the next one is twenty-one point four. This is exempt employee PTO. So this is something that was proposed during the time for those employees that are exempt. Because they work more hours than forty, mostly they're sixty to eighty. A lot of hours. This gives them the opportunity to have vacation time to go. Yes, you can flex your time, but it, sometimes you don't feel like you can unless it's on the books. That's what this is about. So we put in a two-tier approach where those who are department head, city clerk, city manager, designated by city manager to receive eighty hours per year. And those who are tier two would be other exempt positions, would get that forty hours per year. So that would be not your department heads, but maybe a, a level below, if that makes sense. So that's another thing that we, we added in. We just want to make sure you're aware of that. Obviously, it is your discretion. Okay. The next one on there is bereavement leave. The only thing that we changed really in there is we kind of expanded a little bit. The world has changed a little bit. It used to be a traditional family. We've added in things that if there is a what is it, domestic partner, we added that part in there. Just to make it, just expand it into what the world looks like today, if that makes sense. I think that's all that we added on that one. Civic duty leave, that's the same as it was. And then if we go into holiday leave, that's the one we talked about a lot before. So this is where all employees would be paid for holidays after the, at the holiday day, on the holiday day. So the eleven holidays that are designated, everyone would get paid for those if they are required to work on those holidays. They'd get paid time and a half plus the holiday pay of eight hours for that. That's what that one's about. And if you can see the red, maybe go down to the red, that's what that basically says. Eight hours of holiday pay or pro-rata amount, so for those who are part-time, twenty hours or more, they pro-rate for that. They'll get paid base pay plus half pay for actual time worked, that's time and, time and a half. And then they get their eight hours of holiday pay. So that's what that says.
So if they work overtime, they get time and a half? Or they get double?
So overtime would be different because it would be calculated as an overtime rate.
Right. So what is the overtime rate?
It is time and a half, yeah.
Time and a half?
Mm-hmm.
But holiday rather than double, it's two and a half?
It would have to be, yeah. I have to add that in there. I'll add that in there for overtime for.
Well, because everybody got paid for the holiday. But if you worked, then you got time and a half.
Because you're, it's, it's basically same as figuring overtime, but it also is an incentive for people to work on holidays, if we needed to work. So, I mean, that was.
My holidays.
And it would have to be, a holiday would have to be designated, like I said, by their department head that they're required to work. It's not just open to anyone. It would, it would have to be because they need to work on holiday, designated by the city manager. Yeah.
And, and a good example of that was the recent Fourth of July holiday where the extra holiday was granted. We had trainees that didn't work that day because they were the essential personnel, they were given the holiday off. The field training officer worked because they were the essential personnel, it was already scheduled.
I know, I know, Tom's really, he's encouraged that. It's a holiday, let's have a holiday. That's really important. So, yep.
I know, I worked in a hospital for six years and I worked every holiday just because of my age and gender at that time. And it sounded good, the money sounded good, but it was, it was a long day, you know? I was glad to get off and go home and eat a cold turkey, you know?
I worked a lot of holidays, yeah. And the next one is military leave, and that's basically U.S.A.R.A. And it just kind of just lines out how we are following the U.S.A.R.A. laws. And the next one is just F.M.L.A. It's just a quick summary. Basically says, refer to the F.M.L.A. guidelines in the federal law. So leave of absence without pay, that's the same as it was. And leave of absence with pay is the same as it was too. All right. Any questions about those? Good discussions.
Is the reemployment the same?
The, for F.M.L.A.?
No, it's up there. If they leave and then come back.
Is that the same as it was?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay. So I'm gonna skip a little bit because I wanna make sure that we hit certain things. So we do not have currently a public, public relations, social media policy. So I just wanna go through that section with you. So that's section twenty-four. The benefits whole section is, comes right out of our benefits guide. It's from our noble benefits, the people who write our benefit program. And the training one has not changed either. But public relations, social media, we haven't, since we haven't had one, I just wanted to go through this just a little bit. So we just had, like, we did a summary up on the top, the general policy, basically encouraging employees to be courteous. We want to spread goodwill about the city as much as we can. We can't restrict people of their rights, but we do want to encourage that goodwill spreading of the things that, the good things that the city is doing. So we talk about encouraging people to be courteous, to show understanding in spite of difficult situations. Serve the public in an impartial manner, free from discrimination, harassment, and represent the city in a positive manner at all times. That's what we're encouraging them to do. And the next paragraph says, nothing of this policy is meant to, nor should it be interpreted to in any way limit your rights under any applicable federal, state, or local law. That's, we don't want to do that. So, let's see. And then down on the bottom, we said, in this policy, social media, we refer to social media as websites, blogs, social networking, Twitter, Facebook blog, LinkedIn, all of this stuff, if that makes sense. We just wanna concise it into the word social media, if that makes sense. Section twenty-four point two, we wanted to designate spokesperson for the city. So people know who are the individuals who can give information from, officially from the city, if that makes sense. So of course, the mayor, city council, you're a part of that, city manager, the city attorney. Community relations is on there because that's that job, that position's job. Police and fire, they're, the department chiefs and representatives. They have specific media policies within their, their departments that they have to follow for specific reasons. Obviously, a police officer can't go out telling all sorts of stuff about something that happened, you know? We wanna make sure there's confidentiality there. They're restricted to those policies too. We also added our department heads on there. And then just individuals within the department that the city manager designates. So those are the official speakers for the city. Does that look appropriate to you guys? Is there something I've missed? Is there, what's your thoughts there?
I have to think about that for a minute.
Okay.
That's one of those things I'll have to digest.
Okay, okay. The next one is media inquiries. So there are times when the media ask questions and wants those questions answered. So it just basically says that we're gonna make every effort to answer the media as much as we can. Obviously, there's restrictions there. So anyone who is asked, like if a news reporter comes up to me, I am not the one to answer those questions. I would refer that to community relations as a spokesperson. Does that make sense? So it wouldn't be my, my answering, if that makes sense. Now, the community relations person with, with the city manager's approval may ask for me to come in and, and talk to the media. But that would be under their discretion, if that makes sense. But it also says that they should remember to be polite, to, they're representing the city. And they shouldn't speculate or give their opinions. They just need to give the facts and answer the questions that they should. It also says that in the event of a crisis or an emergency, please let the city manager, city attorney, and community relations be notified so that they can handle that crisis and be able to get the information needed out to the public as quickly as possible. So that.
I don't think that it's the city council's place to necessarily put information out in a crisis-type situation. But in the event of a crisis or emergency, there's nothing worse than not being up to date and being sitting behind this counter they fry you. And so as far as I'm concerned, in the event of a crisis or emergency, the city manager, city attorney, community relations, and city council members should be notified immediately.
Thank you, absolutely. That should have been in there. Absolutely. You definitely need to know what's going on in that emergency, definitely. You're probably here before we do sometimes.
You yelled at before you did.
Probably.
You're about birds' day.
I got birds.
So the next section is distinguishing for employees off-duty social media usage. So it just basically says that employees have the right to have their own social media using their own facilities, not city stuff. They can use their own and make sure that that does not interfere with their work. So that's what we wanna do, is make sure that that, they work when it's work time and do what they need to do. Their social media should be separate from that. The city considers social media activities as personal endeavors. And employees can use them to express their ideas and their thoughts. Going back to the front, we always want to encourage that positivity about the city. They need to not post on their own social media platforms as if they were representing the city. We have a process for that, if that makes sense. Okay? If they choose to identify themselves as a city employee on a social media forum, please state that it does not represent the views of the city, or it may not represent the views of the city. Because they may be an employee, but they are not necessarily the spokesperson for the city. And this isn't a city official platform, if that makes sense. Okay. And then the last one is the city encourages employees to resolve work-related complaints by speaking directly with the coworkers, supervisors, managers, department heads, or human resources, rather than on social media. So we just encourage that too.
Is there any teeth behind that, though? So I had an employee years ago that posted some stuff on social media. Really, all we could do about it was how they reacted when we approached them about it. We couldn't, because it's freedom of the.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
And we have to be even more sensitive. I just read a article from the HR website, that they just came out with a new ruling within National Labor Relations Standards Board, the federal guidelines, that we have to be very careful on how our policies are written. Because if we restrict, it has to do with like unionizing or that type of thing, or being, or restricting employees from speaking to one another. If they can prove that we are restricting them at all in our policy, then we are in violation of the law. And that just came out August tenth. So it's something that the legal world is really sensitive to. And so we have to be very careful with that, to not restrict what they can do. So the teeth behind it is very difficult. But we can encourage as much as we can.
Yeah.
If we do want, if they do. Violate, then you have a reason to at least just talk to them and say, oh, I see you have a problem. Could you let us know next time?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if this helps, but in some ways, this is similar to a sign in a park that says, dogs must be on leashes. It's something you can reference. Hey, you know, by the way, dogs should be on leash. It's something we can reference with employees if this is going on, so that it's not just made up out of nowhere.
If you have somebody crazy enough to get on social media, that's one step. The next step is say nasty things about the city.
It's her opinion.
Ask them, and the quit ain't gonna work.
No, it's her opinion, we can't stop it.
It's hard, it really is hard. And we just have to continually, I think, encourage that positivity. And the more we do that, we hope that things will be great, because there are great people here.
Aren't, aren't there, but isn't there ways of restricting? Like, they can be on Facebook or whatever, social media, whatever they want. But when they start referencing specific things about the city, it seems to me like there should, there should be, and, and there is some restrictions on that.
There wasn't until the tenth of this month. That all changed with this new...
Freedom of speech.
Oh, yeah, but where, where did that change, where did that happen at?
It, it was a federal law, so it's National Labor Standards Board. And it applies to local government. It does not apply to state government, but it does to...
Oh, interesting.
So, yeah, and it just happened. It's crazy. So anyway, I can send you that article and you can look at it too. It's...
I refrain from calling people names on there, so I'd be kind of glad they passed that rule.
All right, so the next section is on-duty social media. So this is, this is different. So this is usage when you are, you are designated to be the social media person for your department, or Tom, or you as council members. So I guess you're not employees, but. Employees may engage in, engage in social media, in city-sponsored social media activity during work time. If that's their responsibility, it's great. They can post about music in the park on work time. Approved by their, if they're approved by their department head, and it doesn't identify or reference individuals without permission. So we can't identify Joe down the street. He did this at the, at the, at Music in the Park. We can't do that. We have to be sensitive to individuals' privacy too. It also says the city may monitor employee use of city computers and the internet, including employees' social networking activity on their on-duty time. All social media forums, so this is like our Facebook account, our other accounts that we have, whatever those may be. Those forums are required by, we're, we require approval by the city manager. We're not just going to have anyone set up, anyone, any type of forum. We need to be able to manage those. So that's what that basically is about, before the account is created. And it's just based on that it's going to further the interest of the city. City-sponsored social media forums are not to be used for political purposes, to conduct private or commercial transactions. And any submission is subject to Wyoming Public Records Act. All right. Then the next section actually came out of our, our current policy, just talking about respect. And we, we want to encourage people to be respectful, especially when on social media, to... It's good for, we want that positivity out there too, and so it's kind of that balance. And if individuals want to write really cool things that happened at work, fantastic. Tell about going out and doing a city cleanup on your own, own personal page. That's a fantastic thing. So just encouraging individuals to, to be positive. But just making sure that we, the information is confidential, and that, that we don't put information that's confidential on there, nothing that's copyrighted, you know, profanity, that kind of stuff, political views, commercial endorsements. We don't want those on our social media. And just be respectful when you're posting. And then just talks about at the bottom that any violations may result in disciplinary action.
There's your teeth, Jackie.
Yep. But we have to be very careful. Like I said, you have to justify those rules, so. I know that's a lot to, to digest. Please think about that one. That's a big one. So please think about that one and...
Glad we're getting somewhere with that, because...
Yeah.
It is very important.
It is.
As times change and technology seems to be taking over everything.
Yep, absolutely.
I have to change it.
So the next one is public records. And this one just basically says that we are subject to the Wyoming Public Records Act and kind of goes through the process that the city attorney has been designated, or whoever the designee at the time, from city council, to be the public records guru, so to speak, the one who receives those and makes sure they go out. And just basically says that we are responsible for public records, which we are.
Does it talk about executive session records?
I don't have anything in there because that would be you, not employee.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
We're gonna have to...
Let's skip to...
Oh, I guess we got time, seven thirty. I'm thinking seven, never mind.
Okay.
Sorry, take your time.
So if you don't, we're gonna jump to cybersecurity, because I think this is another big one that I thought we would touch on. Generally, you can say all you want about this. I will tell you, I did not, I, I rewrote this in my wording so it fit in, but Josiah put this together. So I, because I am not, this is not my forte at all. So before he left, you put this all together. So hopefully it fits. I'll let you guys do your thing with it. I'll even let you read it, because I don't get it. So one of the things we did include in here is that this policy, we want to be able to be for all employees, contractors, volunteers, anyone who's using our network. We're using this policy to kind of, this is what needs to happen. Just because there are other people that come in and use our network, whether it be CPU, RIT people, for one, they come in and use our network. This is what we want to be able to have set for them too. So that's, we just want to make sure that we protect our, our stuff.
That would include us, right?
Yes, yes, yes. So on the, on the bottom, you can see, this is, this has a lot to do with harassment. We want to make sure that we're not being discriminatory, we're not harassing people, we're not doing those not-so-breathe things, not those bad things. And we don't want that to happen on our social media accounts, so. Harassments, profanity, we want to keep things, keep things good. Copyrighted material, we want to make sure we're not violating those things too. Employees are, are responsible to make sure that they're, they're following the law. And I don't know if you can see twenty-seven point three, you're not there yet, but twenty-seven point three is what our old policy, that's all that was in there. So we were, we've expanded it quite extensively, so. What's the world, right? Yeah, what's the law that protects you guys, or that you have to, your privacy laws? What is that law? Like ours is HIPAA. Do you guys have a specific one?
No, not, there's no federal law that governs, it's governed through our policy.
Okay.
Our policy about protecting our database and the information that's contained there. I think that, there are some things that we get through CGIS, the Criminal Justice Information System, and that is governed by the CGIS policy of the federal.
Okay.
I apologize.
Is that like HIPAA, FERPA, and all those, kind of?
Kind of, yeah, because it has criminal justice information, like criminal history, who can't, you know, unauthorized people access to criminal history information. You can't share. I can't run a driver's license and then share it with a member of the city council if it only means for criminal justice purposes.
Okay.
Or you can't like...
CGIS policy.
Look up information on your ex?
No. Has to be for legitimate Mexican purposes.
That'd be hard. You don't have an ex, do you?
Not an ex-wife, no. Hope to keep it, though.
You know, I know we're fairly secure here, but I think I've been hacked about three or four times. Jackie always was the first one to let me know, "I'm not bailing you out, you're staying in jail," or whatever.
I'm not buying you a lot of gift cards.
Or money, or whatever.
It always uses your full name, too. This is Terry. Okay, Terry, I like it.
Yep. I think it's three or four times that's happened. It's always the city side, not my personal side.
Yeah.
It's just weird. Yeah, remember your passwords.
I couldn't get it memorized, the way you change it.
Yeah, I've got about a thousand of them, it seems like. Mine always starts with Debbie.
You're not supposed to reveal that every day.
That's the beginning of every, all, all but the city one, but...
Oh, I figured, Debbie, what did I write down? What's my password?
I lock myself out of stuff and that, man.
I just, I just noted that for Stephanie to fix.
What is it, testing?
What's that?
We encourage testy in every choice.
I could tell you what I think.
It's just supposed to be outright.
It's supposed to be what?
It shouldn't be there.
Oh.
We scribbled it on my log.
Don't, don't ask the nurse.
I didn't know it was supposed to be...
I know, a different meaning.
No, it has the same meaning.
Wait a minute, go back up?
Oh, sorry.
Right there.
Right there?
Hey, thanks.
It is a lot. IT's a big thing. I mean, it's, the world has changed, but it's not, it's not going away. So we gotta get up to, get up other times to do it, so.
Moving from the corner silence to this.
Yep. All right, so the next one is internet usage. And this just goes through and just talks about our internet and making sure that it is secure also. This was in our last policy. We just rewritten it to make it fit. All right, so the last thing I just want to go through, I know we just have like fifteen minutes, is the problem-solving agreement says. And so this, as I go through this, we really haven't changed our process, we've just defined it more to make sure, we put in timelines and we've done that, that type of thing in our, in our process. And when I went through this originally, this, I worked with Kathy McPherson and when she was here way back in the day to define this. And so that, this kind of came working with her to make sure that we, we knew what would work and what was the best from a legal standpoint in order to set ourselves up for success, both for the employee and if we end up having forbidden a legal confrontation, so to speak. And so that's what, what we did through this. So just right off the bat, there is a statement at the very top. Because fire and police have civil service, they are the exception to the rule. And they, their fire civil service commissions, that is their designated job, is to take care of these, these problems. And so they have their set rules and they take precedence over this, just because that's how the law is set up. However, there are situations that are not covered by their civil service commission rules, and if they're not, then they would follow this policy. And then other employees that are not covered through, through civil service, they would follow this policy, okay? So the first section is problem solving. And this is the section that Kathy had actually gone, would've gone to the county, and the county had this section in there. And it just basically says, "If you have a problem, sometimes you can resolve it on your own. It doesn't have to go through the, the formal proceedings for every problem. Try and work it out. Do your best to do that. If you can't work it out together, maybe get a manager and they can help you work through that problem. So it doesn't have to be escalated into something bigger. Try that first, that's basically, solve the problems. But if there's an instance where it needs to be resolved by a higher authority, that is a possibility too. I do like, let's see, so like in the second paragraph, "If the differences involve a department head and an employee, then a meeting or conference with human resources can be requested by either the department head or the employee to discuss the problem, settle the differences. It can be done formally, informally, in a cooperative, respectful, and confidential manner, okay? If it can't be resolved at that level, then it will be... Or if the problems or disagreements involve an employee supervised by the council, the city manager or designee and human resources will meet with the involved parties and resolve that. And the city manager, just like in our policy right now...
Now, wait a minute.
The city manager makes that final decision.
If the problem cannot be resolved at that level, or, or if the problem, problems and disagreements involved an employee supervised by the council, the city manager or designee and human resources will meet with the involved parties. And I would say that none of them are, it's none of their business.
So, so this is only, this is not if, this is if, for instance, like the city attorney has a conflict with an employee, then the city manager can be that, or he can designate someone to be that person. It is not for a disciplinary action of the city attorney or disciplinary action of a city manager. That would be your responsibility entirely. That's not, not there. We're resolving a problem between an employee and the city manager, or the employee and the city attorney. Yeah.
Right.
You're not, yeah.
Yeah. But, but any disciplinary action with your employees is your, your job. Not our job at all.
Is that, is that just unclear? Is that what you're saying?
If you want it more clear, this is...
It's not related to me.
It's our employees, and that's how it's resolved.
So I can rewrite that to be a little more clear.
This is just discussing the problem and possible solutions, not any disciplinary actions.
There's certain, certain statements stay in.
Yeah.
And you don't cross those lines. And this, at first blush, kind of makes it look that way. And those lines just shouldn't be crossed. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah. I will rewrite it, because that's, that's the meaning, is we just want to make sure that if it's your employee, it's entirely your deal, yeah.
But if they're supervi, if they're any other employee, really, then their Tom's, Tom's deal... and they're Tom's, Tom's deal, not, and whoever he chooses to involve, I don't, I don't like the way that is.
Okay. I will rewrite that.
So you're saying if an employee had a problem with one of our employees, like the city lawyer, that should be addressed with us? But the employee is still under, uh, HR?
Yeah, that would be, the city manager would designate somebody to hear their problem and see what's going on. If it's the employee, city attorney thing, it's not, we couldn't discipline, ever discipline, and I can put that in there. We could never discipline one of your designated employees.
Right, and then the city manager would report back to us what happened, I'm sure.
But it just looks to me like we've interjected human resources into that when it's actually, if there's a disagreement between our, say, our city manager and one of his employees, that's between our city manager and our employees. And if he wants to consult you, that would be fine, or someone in your position, but, uh, this puts it in stone and I don't, that's not right.
Okay.
In my opinion.
So you don't want HR part of that? Is that what you're saying?
Not, not in that case, unless, unless once it's rewritten, it's, it's different to me, but, um...
I'm reading it as he would, that, that would be his choice, if he decided to have human resources step in to help. That's how I'm reading this. So if he decides that, or the lawyer or someone else.
But it says will. See, it says disagreements involve an employee supervised by the council, the city manager or designee, and human resources will, when it should be the city manager may involves human resources or whatever.
Where if the employee...
The word will means they will. It's a positive.
Well, if the employee wants human resources there, that can be denied, is that what you're saying?
That would be up to the city manager to designate. Basically, the city manager right there, it, it designates who is gonna be on it, and if he wants human resources, it'd be up to him to determine whether they need to be in on it.
If the employee wants human resources, can they request that? I think it should, if the, I think if the employee wants human resources, human resources should be there.
But if there's a, if an employee is fired or brought up on a grievance, isn't there already a, uh, isn't there a way to go to human resources and ask for a, I don't know what to call it?
Arbitrator.
An arbitrator? Isn't that already in place?
Um, this would be that, is they could ask for that, an arbitrator.
So this just needs to be...
So we can reword to make this sound that way?
Yeah.
Yep. So if I'm clear, I just wanna make sure I'm clear, that if the employee wants an arbitrator, if they want somebody, if they want HR to be there, they can request that? Or does that have to be determined by the city manager?
I think it's still, they can request that, but it still needs to be determined by the city manager.
Why, why do we wanna remove human resources in it? I mean, this is specifically to their job, I guess. Um, that's what my confusion, wouldn't we want them to be there?
Well, Tom's boss, they're the employees. Human resources is a tool to help, uh, hire, but not manage employees. To help hire, keep them recruited, um, that sort of thing.
So one of the big things with HR is that they are, um, to be a, I don't know what the word is, un, unbiased, um, individual, to help bring people together to resolve problems. So, um, they don't manage so that they can be unbiased. And that's kind of the role of HR. Um, obviously, you can determine that, I'm not the one who would do that, but that is one of HR's basic responsibilities, is being that, that advocate for the employee.
And supervisor.
Yeah.
And supervisor, yeah.
Yeah, but, but they're an employee of the city manager. And so is a lot of other people that ensure things around the city and, and at his request. Fine, and if the employee requested it and he approved it, that would also be fine. But to automatically say they will be interjected into that is wrong.
The reason we got an HR person to begin with is because it helped, help me, Steve, with issues that...
Lead me on here, so I'm trying to figure out where you're going. If they're supposed to provide the unbiased position, if that's what they're, if that's their job,
Yes, yes.
They still have to be assigned to do that job by the city manager if there's a conflict with one of our employees.
Oh, okay, that makes sense, but...
Because we only have three, and if there's a problem with one of those three, we're, we're at a fairly high level in this hierarchy that you're referring to.
Yeah.
To patently say that you now will do X, that's, that's the rub. Because they could say, you know what, I don't want HR, my own attorney. They could do that, but that says HR will be in that meeting, even if there is an attorney. Even if they don't want HR there, they still will be there. You've, you've taken it completely out of the hands of being able to make that decision on merit. That's, it's just that one word, will.
Part of the reason for having HR is, is you have that unbiased person that can, can be that arbitrary person in some cases, the arbitrator in some cases. The other function of HR is to make sure that the city manager is making good, informed decisions as far as personnel law and policy goes.
Well, but I understand, I understand that, but he's not sitting there alone. He's got, well, in this case, three attorneys at the moment. So I'm sure Tom or the, our current city manager would not, he would know when to say, hey, I need your help, or I don't. He would know when to talk to the attorney, 'cause she's not an attorney.
What if the problem's with the city attorney?
What's that?
What if the problem's with the city attorney?
Then, then that's another situation, then we have to get together and hire another attorney to advise us how to navigate those waters, 'cause that's a whole nother deal.
I, I think we should leave it, um, and, because it's a safeguard for us, too. And Tom and everybody involved, it's, it's a nice cushion between everybody, that you don't have to worry about. That's their professional, that's their, that's what they do for a profession. I think they should always be involved if there's a conflict with employees, period.
And gotta remember, this document is not just for the people we have in place now.
I, oh, I, I realize that, but I'm just saying the will part. If, if that were reworded the way we talked about, or that's elective, then that, I wanna see the rewritten one, now I'll change my mind, but the way that's written, I can accept that.
Do you want it to be elective for both sides of the document?
Yes.
Yes, 'cause I think the employee should have the right to have human resources involved if they want them involved.
And I don't think this needs to...
As long as that employee isn't asking legal questions and, uh, the, uh, human resource is answering those questions, not being an attorney, it could really be a bad deal. So it, it really is like fingerprints, it depends on the situation. And that's why the flexibility with the city manager should be there to decide, hey, this is who I need, or this.
And if the problem is the city manager, then he would pick somebody, he would pick the lawyer or the judge?
We would be the first to know.
Hopefully, he picks somebody else. I mean, that's why that's important. HR will be there, then you don't have to worry about...
HR doesn't have control over him, you do.
But HR will be there to help balance it if there is a situation that occurs.
But if we change it to where the, the person, the employee, and choose to have HR there or not, I'm fine with it being not a necessary thing. It's like you said, it all depends on the situation.
What if the person, if the problem is the HR person?
Yeah, then you wouldn't want them in there.
Yeah.
So, so remove the will, but if the, if the employee...
Wants, request them, then they can be in there.
And then, can they be denied?
Just change the word, to say human resources, resources may meet with the involved parties.
Okay. But, um, my, I guess my next question is, can the employee, as long as the employee can't be denied that if they request it?
Well, either whichever one requests it, then it can't be denied.
Right.
City manager requests it, then it has to, if the employee requests it, then it has to be, be there. So, yeah.
There is mud.
I think, I think I got it. Perfect.
And like in the case right now, or soon, we're going to have somebody in the HR, so then what happens? If it's will, now you have a problem. The clock, don't stop. Anyway.
Right, this, the next section is the ADA, ADAAa grievances. Um, and that just is basically what it was before. There is a whole lot of changes in there. And just kind of basically says that if it's a discrimination for disability, it's, we need to, this is the process that you go through to file that. It's done federally, it's not done here, if that makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then the last one is just retaliation to, we've done, put up with that, so. Alright, the next one is, um, performance improvements and disciplinary actions. So this kinda goes through, um, basically that process. Um, if there is a disciplinary action, this is the process. This was our problem solvings, this is our disciplinary action, okay? Um, same thing, fire and police are, do their own thing. This is, it, it goes through and begins, um, that once again, that city of Rollins employees are at will. Um, and it says that multiple times throughout this, um, that there's nothing that is contractual, we are at will employees. Um, however, throughout, um, the country right now, at will status is very different than it used to be. Um, and so you have to be able to, um, show that there's reason for that disciplinary action. Okay, and that's what this goes through. Um, so it just talks about the responsibilities of employees, responsibility of management. We kinda divided this out, so each, each person knew where they fit. Um, it's just their, their duties to be aware of the policies and the work rules, um, and to perform to the best of their ability. Um, and the, of management, it's their job that they are to, um, approach corrective measures objectively, um, and that if they can do it in a performance improvement, please help your employees. Please do what you can do to help them, um, to approve and do what they need to do. If things have to be, um, taken up the ladder, then, then they can. But let's see what we can do to work with our employees. Um, and it just talks about the different types of discipline that came out of our current policy. Um, and then in twenty-nine point four, it talks about conduct that can result in disciplinary action. Um, this comes from our policy, we did expand it a little bit. So the first one, um, it says unexplained or unexcused absenteeism and tardiness. We added including lunch and break periods onto that. Um, the next one, discourteous, inattentive or unprofessional treatment. We added that inattentive or unprofessional treatment of the public or work associates. Um, the next one, um, says failure to report in an accident, report an accident or an injury. We added the an injury portion on that one. Um, the next one's the same. The next one is disclosing confidential information, just added the word disclosing on that. And then going down to the bottom, toward the bottom at fighting. So the rest of them are already in our policy. Um, the ones on the bottom, we added fighting, harassment, or discrimination of any kind, um, damaging or using city-owned equipment without authorization, um, dishonesty, including deception, fraud, lying, cheating, or theft, violating time card procedures, carrying a weapon on city property unless authorized in their job description. Um, that goes back to our weapons policy. Um, failure to comply with licensure or certification requirements, um, soliciting gifts or tips. Um, those are the ones we added on there. Um, and then we, the next section, we really just defined, um, reprimand, suspension, demotion, termination. They are listed in our, our, um, policy currently. We just, just made them more clear, is all, all that is. Um, section twenty-nine point nine, this is one, um...
Sorry.
You're fine. Sorry, we have, we need to hurry, too. So, um, this is a section that we, um, are currently doing, but we really just went through and just defined what this meant. So an employee, if they are disciplined, um, a disciplinary action, um, they have the opportunity or right to have a hearing. And so currently, they are placed on paid administrative leave, which is the, is twenty-nine point ten. They have the right to request a hearing within two days. And this is what our policy says currently, right now. Um, so that, um, is what the hearing is. That hearing is by someone who is designated, it either is the city manager or designated by the city manager for that hearing. Um, and they hear the, um, other person's side. They, um, take that information, if it is the city manager, the city manager makes that final decision. He always makes. The city manager is entitled to make that, 'cause he, all of us are his employees, he makes that decision. Um, and that's what that means. Um, and then just talks about communication for that. Um, the administrative leave portion, we did add in there that they are, administrative leave should not exceed fifteen calendar days. We want this, um, proceeding to move along. Um, we don't wanna extend that out, so. We didn't have a limit in the last one. Um, the next one is, actually, I didn't even describe it in the last one, so. Um, the, the next paragraph talks about police investigations. They are civil service, and they're different. Police investigations may take more than fifteen days. They will be paid, unpaid administrative leave during that time. So we just wanted to make sure it was very clear that they weren't part of that. Okay? So that's what I have. Any questions, anything that stands out to you? Okay, I will make those changes that you talked about, and then give that, um, to Tom and submit it to legal.
I don't wanna submit it to legal yet.
Okay. Do you wanna have another session?
No, not necessarily, but, you know, you're talking about how many pages is this? I, I'm, I'm calling it a quarter inch pages. Um, this is so involved, uh, it's gonna take us some time. At least myself, and I've had a couple others, uh, express the same thing. Uh, even though we've done it for several hours here, we all need to take it home now that it's modified, the one you're gonna give us.
Okay.
And we can go home, look through it one more time before it gets sent to legal. And then at that time, um, then we will vote to either send it to legal or not. And then, um, when it comes back, we'll just have to see what happens and go from there. But, um, it's, it's gonna, it's not gonna happen right away.
Okay.
Because, um, it's just too important, and I've had several people express to me that they wanna make sure that it is what we talked about and that it was translated properly and such like that.
Okay, fantastic. So I will get it put together and make those changes, and I will give it to Tom, and he can do his magic.
We'll go from there.
Okay. Well, thank you so much, I appreciate it, and I'm excited that this is to the point that it is. Well, thank you so much, I appreciate it, and I'm excited that this is to the point that it is.
Well, thank you, and good luck with your new endeavors.
Thank you.
You'll be greatly missed.
Alright, we're gonna, uh, workshop's over, we're gonna, Djarren will take a break till seven thirty.
Okay, that works, thank you.
Trying to fall down or something?
Well, that's no good. Need a new, uh, rubber band.
Did you break it?
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you so very much.
Thanks for understanding. Oh, that's a, great.
Welcome to Zoom, enter your name.
Hey, how do you know what your username is?
Please enter the meeting password followed by town. You have not entered any number, please re-enter the meeting password followed by town.
That makes sense of why it wasn't working. Cause I knew another user. Well, these are all, uh, nevermind, I didn't sign. They're sealed, sorry. I thought it was over here for me to sign.
Are we set up? I'll start answering myself. Yeah. You've been working on it for how long? From two thousand eight to now, and on top of that.
Yeah, just show me where you're at.
Yeah, in one cup, that's it. You, you change this, you strip this out, that's okay. You can do that, really. Yeah, put it in blue.
Are we set?
Boy, what a relief.
How come it doesn't, how come it doesn't want to say join the meeting? I did. Oh, you know what would be helpful is me logging in. It's helpful if I log in.
Hmm, I don't even know login stuff, so.
Okay.
I hope it saved my, I'm not- Sorry for missing.
There it is. There. It's helpful if I play along.
Linda Walsh told me to tell you hi.
She's really working on something.
She's awesome.
Now, you have my password set, and I can't do it.
You just need to change it. I can't handle changing it, so I'm stuck with barrel. So, I, I texted, I was like, hey, I can't change it, I'm not going to forget this. That's for two weeks, I'm forgetting it.
Yeah. Number, number dash, yeah, yeah.
I can see that.
I was just trying to log in here, and I dropped my computer off, I dropped off this before, and I'm trying to log in, and I'm like, that's my password. I'm thinking, I look at it, and I'm like, well, that's not my username, CPU admin, I'm like-
You should, yeah, just show on your screen where you can click it before you said not to.
Yeah. Well, I wasn't prepped for that, I just seen it. Login, yeah, right.
At least four docs works, works pretty good, so, this might go to.
Alright, thank you, uh, call this meeting to order, it is seven thirty-three. Uh, please join for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, can we have roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Terry Wytham?
Here.
Vice Mayor Spiesanglin?
Here.
Councilmember Darryl Gardner?
Here.
Councilmember Tommy Lumen?
Here.
Councilmember Bruce Seeloff?
Here.
Councilmember Jacqueline Wells?
Here.
Councilmember Chris Weisner?
Here. Alright, thank you. Next thing on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Do I hear a motion? Councilman Wells?
I move to approve the August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three city council agenda as presented.
Second. There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three city council agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed, the motion passes with seven days.
Alright, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is, uh, the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion. Councilman Lumen? Sorry.
I move to approve the city consent agenda of August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three as presented.
Second. There's been a motion made and seconded to, uh, present the, uh, August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed, the motion passes with seven days.
Alright, thank you. Uh, the next thing on our agenda is citizens' participation. This is a time set aside, uh, con- uh, pursuant to resolution number two C dash ninety-six. It sets a time limit for five minutes for, uh, citizens to get up and speak to us about something they would like to talk to us about. It cannot, it has to be something that is not on the agenda. And, uh, is there anybody here that would like to address us at this time? Uh, please come forward, tell us your name, uh, sign in, and tell us what you came here to say.
My name is Art Kennedy, and, uh, I would like to talk to the city council about parking in our community. And, uh, earlier today, I was on Murray Street. There's ninety-seven vehicles that I've seen on Murray Street that are parked on city right-of-way. This has been going on for years. And there's other places in town that repair businesses think they can just take up all the streets they want to take up if they're parking on, or if they're working on somebody's car. But according to your ordinances, says you can't. So I'm gonna, I did a copy on some of these ordinances, which got too many, I don't have that much paper. But a couple of them that I think that you should look at are on here, and I would think that you should, uh, try to do something to get the people involved that are doing wrong in a meeting. So, obviously, we're not going to get anything done with it because it's been going on for so long. So it's time to find out what the people want to do if the, if the people that are taking care of the ordinances aren't going to enforce them. So, uh, when we're talking about several places in town, we have this issue. We have, the ordinance say that we can't run our business out of our house and park cars, our business cars on the street. And they're, they're all over town like that. So what do we have to do to change that, or what do we have to do to make the people comply, or change the rules, or whatever? Because it's going to cause problems in some neighborhoods that, that we as the city, I say we, the city allows this to go on without changing it. And I'm as guilty as anybody because I've had cars parked on the street, and today if you went down on, uh, Murray Street, you'd find I got three of them parked on the street, not on the street, on the city right-of-way. And if there's an issue with the right-of-way, then maybe the city needs to go in and survey those streets and say, here's the right-of-way. Anything on this side of that right-of-way, you guys either put in the fence or get rid of it. Or tow it, or whatever. But where would you put ninety-seven cars today if you had to straighten out that ordinance? That's something you need to ask yourself. And I would believe that everybody in our community that is related to cars would come to a public meeting if there was a public meeting scheduled for them to come and talk about why we have ninety-seven cars on one street on city right-of-way. And pretty much that's what I'm here to talk about, is that. If there's, I don't know what you can get done with it, but it needs to, something needs to happen. It looks terrible. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Art, is there anybody here that else that would like to address us? Please come forward and-
Mayor, city council? I'm Joe Garcia, I'm in, uh, I believe it's Ward Two, South Side.
Ward one.
Ward, no, let's see, still learning, still learning. But, okay, so I'm in Ward One, and, uh, I was told that there was a six penny tax, and some of it was going to go to Washington Street. I'm not really familiar with local politics, so I don't know how that works. I know there's issues with water lines supposedly going from Bolton Park, et cetera, et cetera. Um, uh, we also got, uh, internet connections where the people were working close to the tunnel there, and we still got big pothole right there at the, uh, it's concrete to concrete, uh, everybody. I know it's, the, the tunnel, people use it as a one-way now, but, uh, there's a bad spot right there that still needs patched. I did talk to Cody a little bit about Washington Street. But, uh, I was just curious of, uh, you guys are the ones who make decisions, I assume? So I was just curious if you guys have an exact, uh, timeframe, or if that's going to get done with the six penny tax, or anything like that? And, uh, if not, where is that going to go? And I, 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 I don't want to make big issues, I'm just curious of, because all the streets need it.
Sure, well, and we have a policy that during this time, we do not respond to citizens, so, uh, Joe, what I'm going to do is, uh, there, my cards are hanging out front. If not, I have one, I'll give you one, call me, and I'll be more than happy to sit down with you, talk to you about all of those things and what's going on. Because it is, uh, moving target and, and whatnot, and it's, so if you would get ahold of me, I'd be more than happy to explain that stuff to you.
Ten-four, I just, uh, was curious, and then, uh, I guess other questions that other people might have. I'm just learning the politics, okay, so I, I don't really know a lot. If it doesn't go to Washington, would you guys put it out there of where that money is going to go? Or you guys just make it aware to the citizens, like in the meetings? Oh, we're going to use it for Washington, but we got these issues, we're going to take that money, use it over here. Those generically, so we understand.
We, we kind of, we kind of have, but-
Ten-four, okay.
But it's not totally black and white yet, but I can explain all that to you later. I don't want to break our rules here.
Nope, thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thanks. And Ward One is the ward I represent, myself and Bruce, so either one of us. Uh, is there anybody else that would like to come forward and address us at this time? Alright, thank you. The next thing we'll do is go on to, uh, city council reports, and these are the various boards that we have, uh, been assigned to. Jeez, here we go. Uh, Board of Adjustments, uh, Councilman Seeloff?
Okay, at our last meeting, they approved two variances, and, uh, that's about what we got.
Okay.
Just a quick question, what kind of variances were approved?
One of the variants were addition on a, that would be two- One of the variants were addition on a, that would be to close the property line. The other ones were septic system and Elk Court, after by Elk Court.
Okay.
Thank you.
The next one is Carbon County Council of Governments. I'm on that board. I did not make it to the last meeting, I apologize. There was a conflict. We will move to the next one, which is DDA Main Street, Vice Mayor Sanger.
Yeah, so we're getting ready to start our second round of Art Around Town. This is the banner program that the city does, and we're looking for artists. So if you go to downtownrawlins.org and look it up, it has all of the information you need to how to apply, how big the banner itself is, what kind of art, that kind of material. And you will see them, they look like this, around for that banner program. And then Art Beat is October sixth from four to eight P M. And I don't know if any of you have been downtown, I go downtown quite often because I have to water plants. And every Sunday when I go downtown, there is a birthday party, there is a splash pad event going on. It's not just people showing up and playing on Splash Pad, there's full-on parties going on that the Splash Pad is the entertainment value. And it's really interesting to go down there because I'm going down to water, and in one minute, there'll be one child, and I'll come back around the corner, and there's a hundred. And it's just like that. It's instantaneous. And it's such a really interesting thing and cool thing for the city to have. And the people that walk up and go, thank you for putting that there. It's entertainment they get for not having to spend a lot of money. So, that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Next thing is Rollins Planning Commission. Councilman Weisenberg?
I have nothing to report at this time. I believe our next meeting is gonna be this next month, I believe.
All right. Urban Systems Committee, Councilman Garner?
I don't have anything to report.
All right. Next thing on our agenda is reports or information. Is there anybody here from the Carbon County Airport Board that would like to give a update? I got a call from Dean saying he wasn't gonna make it, and he wasn't sure who would, but.
He sent out an email asking for volunteers.
All right, well, thank you for being here. I will turn the floor over to you. Thank you.
So my name's J R Eggleston, I'm with the Rollins Carbon County Airport Board. We are in the middle of two projects right now. We are putting an addition on the what originally was intended to be the FBO building, right now it's being leased to the BLM for the air fire suppression group. We are adding, putting an addition on that. Construction is in progress, if you will. And the second is to acquire some additional snow blowing equipment. And a tractor and a mower for the, keep the runways clean. So that's pretty much consuming it. We're picking the colors, so, of the building, right now, so.
Getting close. So airplanes that land and take off, I know, I don't know if you folks keep track of those takeoff and landings, but are they up or down, or do you know?
I don't have any solid numbers. My my perception from the, we get a small percentage of the fuel sales that go through classic aviation. My perception from that is that they are slightly up, but we're it always is this time of year with the big Oshkosh convention. We do have an uptick every year during that time. We do have the Rollins Flying Club is grown quite substantially, and there are some local instructors, so they're doing a lot of flying out of there now as well.
I was in that flying club, it's a great way to learn to fly. Well, does anybody have any questions? Comments?
What's an Oshkosh convention?
Yeah.
It's what they call a fly-in. It's basically airplanes from all over the world gather in Oshkosh, Wisconsin to get together and talk about airplane stuff.
It's a car show with airplanes.
I thought you made up a name.
No, if you're an airplane buff, that's the one show.
Okay.
You fly through going one way, and fly back through going the other way.
Well, I don't have anything, any questions for you, but thank you for what you do, and I guess we do have.
Oh, I just have a question on board member standings, applications and stuff. I know you're short a couple members.
We're not, actually, I have a full board at present.
You do? Okay.
Oh, good.
Wow.
Well, thank you for what you do. The airport's a really important thing to our community, and I don't fly anymore because I can't pass physical, but it's a a great thing to have, and
These are thank you cards.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Myra. And just so you know, I have a really bad memory. Here's the thank you cards for your board, and I'll give them to you, and you can distribute them to them, and thank you all for what you do. And taking care of our, our forests. So, thank you. And thanks, Myra. Yeah, forest and waters next time. All right. So the next thing on our agenda is city manager and staff reports, and I'll turn the floor over to you, Tom.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to start off tonight with something a little bit different than what we usually do, but we've got an employee of the city that I'd like to recognize tonight with a special recognition. Pam Thayer is here with us, with her husband, and we'd really like to recognize her for her efforts that she had during the groundbreaking of the transmission line. I've never seen anybody go above and beyond like she did. It just is really remarkable. And she brought so much recognition upon the city of Rollins, the organization of the city of Rollins. And her efforts are just, nothing short of amazing. And we have a special guest that she'll see that would like to say a few words. Kara Feket, would you like to speak?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yep, yes.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much, Council, for the opportunity to address you briefly, and thank you for consideration of Pam for recognition by the city for an award. As the city manager said, she was just an exceptional partner and supporter. And we work to try to pull this event together and really highlight downtown Rollins and what Rollins has to offer. And with the short timeframe we have to pull the event together, I'm pretty confident in saying I could not have done it without Pam's help and advocacy for the city, helping us obtain resources that we needed in the area and the city, and just really, really grateful for all of her work. And the work of all the city staff that have worked with Pam, and again, helped make our event a great success. So I appreciate again the opportunity to have her be considered for special recognition by the city of Rollins.
Matt, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, we appreciate it. We do have a certificate that I've signed, and that the mayor will sign, that we will give to Pam for that special recognition, that she's able to put on the wall in her office and show it off to people, so.
Better get some pictures.
Yes.
Yep.
Here you go, Tom.
I have one thing.
It's, it's a tribe, it's teamwork, it's not just me. It's all of you guys in this room, and it's everybody, so thank you.
Led by you. Tom, here's his.
You should have a picture with your fam, you need a picture with your family.
Yeah, your family.
The family.
Okay, we have to do it on the other side of the.
Your family's here, yeah?
Yeah, in front.
Can you still get the council?
I can. And now I'm with the family?
Nope.
And Tom can stay to show the city?
I'm in first.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Pam. I'm gonna take a minute and tell a quick story about the first time I met Pam. They're trying to open the mercantile downtown, and I had about ten different people come and say, it costs five hundred dollars, would you like to invest in the mercantile? And I would say, yes, I do, and I would feel really good. And they'd leave, and they'd never come back. And then the next person would, I felt really good ten times, never cost me a dime. And I'm serious, and it was getting down to the wire. And Pam came in, and she, you know, hey, I'm here, I'd never met her before, and I'm here to get this thing going, and are you an interested investor? And, and I said, yes, thinking I'll feel really good and to be free again. Well, she went and got the paperwork, it's cost me five hundred bucks, and and because of that drive, we got that mercantile. And if it wasn't for Pam Thayer, that never would have happened, and that's my Pam Thayer story, and I'm sorry, Tom, I'll turn the floor back over to you.
She's very deserving, so.
I forgot to say, I said, where's your check?
And I wanted to go in the back room and keep looking.
Okay. Couple other things tonight to mention is the city view has been mailed out. So everyone at home should, should have this now, and if not, we have copies at the city, we're happy to get those out to everyone. So if anyone has not received one, let the city know, and we'll be happy to get that out. You will see on the agenda under the city manager departmental reports, there is a new section now in there that will have department reports in there, so that you can read and see what the departments are reporting to council. And then on August twenty-ninth, I want to throw this out, is that we've talked a lot through the budgeting process about the business plans that we're gonna put out, and that we're gonna work on. We're gonna have a kickoff meeting where I'm gonna have the department heads and several of the supervisors. And we will roll that out to the staff, kind of have a kickoff meeting, if you will, on Tuesday, August twenty-ninth, at ten A M. And I want to invite whoever from council would like to show up to that.
What day, I'm sorry, Tom?
It's gonna be August twenty-ninth, it's a Tuesday, at ten A M. And what we will do is go over what we're gonna put in the plans, and I'm gonna get them out to the department heads. And if, like I said, if council wants to come see what the process is about, and what we are trying to achieve, I I definitely want to invite council to that. Because these are gonna be really important for our, our future, as we define services and define the budget a little bit closer to the services, and what we feel that we can offer, you know, and then what we'll do is we will compile these plans, and then we will bring them back to, to council. Of course, with everything that we find, and we'll be able to assure that, and then when the budget season comes, or those, those different times, we'll have a plan that we can fall back on. So so we will, we'll do that. We have changed our, our leadership meetings a little bit to what they have been. And the last Tuesday, if there's a fifth Tuesday in the month, it'll be strategic planning. That's what we'll have on those fifth Tuesdays, and I will let council know on those. And that's what we're gonna look at is strategic planning, and I will get, you know, get that out so that council can can come to those meetings and, and at least hear, you know, what's being discussed. The last thing is, is we, we sent out an RFP on the Glen Edition to design the Glen Edition for the water and those things. And we had seven different engineering firms that bid on those.
Oh.
That bid on that, and we will bring a recommendation next council meeting to council on which one that we would recommend to councils on that. So with that, that's my report.
Well, thank you, Tom Seven. I'm pretty impressed. I wouldn't think there'd be that many, and I'm glad there are. All right. So the next thing on our agenda is a direction from city council to city manager. Does anybody have anything?
We had talked about previously about town hall. Is that still on the schedule for some time?
Yes, it is. What, what the initial thought was earlier in the spring was water restrictions. And since we have not really had those issues come up, what we are looking for now is updates on the transmission line as far as the construction plans and the funding pursuits that we have on that. So it is still in the planning, we're just gonna change the focus a little bit.
Can you have an idea of when, month-wise?
Fall.
September oct, is coming up fast, I'm just saying. And
Councilman Weisenberg, next. Were you done?
No, I had one other thing. I know we talked also about people being able to pay off their fines by working for the city. Do you know where that went, or is that on hold until we get another city attorney?
We have started those initial discussions, but we haven't really followed up specifically. I will revisit that.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Weisenberg?
Yeah, Tom, it's been a while since I, we've heard anything about it, but we had had a plan devised for scheduling visits and water updates and stuff like that with the Town of Sinclair. Where are we at with that? I want to keep that up and going. I know it's a forgotten about deal because we're not under restrictions, kind of, you know? But I still want to keep those talks up.
Correct. I, I, I just had a discussion this week with Mayor Meeks of Sinclair, and we will schedule those soon.
Okay.
It, it has been, you know, you know, brought up again. He was in my office, and we, we talked about it. I'm hoping within the next couple weeks, we'll be able to have a date on that.
Okay, thank you.
Tom, I talked to you a little bit earlier, too, and I just didn't know if you'd found out anything more about those streets on South Side that have had those cuts in that brand-new street, and the gas company's supposed to fill them, and I, it's getting late in here, I'm nervous. We're gonna, we're gonna ruin that street.
Yes, we, we have had discussions on that as well. The company that, that, you know, that is under contract for that, we're not sure that that, you know, that they're able to, to do that, so we're we're gonna go to a Plan B on that, but, but we are talking about that, and I agree, those need to be be replaced by the time the snow starts to fall.
Well, I'm not trying to hassle you, but I just, it's, it's an on-running thing, and I don't think they've been very reactive to their responsibility, really, so. Anyway, Councilman Weisenberg?
Speaking of street cuts, what's the plan for all the sewer street cuts that's been taking place, and the roads that's tore up all throughout? I, I know in the Mountain View area, everywhere I drive is street cuts all over. What's the plan for getting those patched? Where's our street department stand on those?
I will have to get with Mr. Gill on that. Yeah, I, I haven't had discussions on that, I apologize. I will find that out.
Yeah, if you could, thank you.
Okay. Is there anything else? Thank you, Tom. All right. Next thing on our agenda is a set of minutes. Is that right? Yeah. Councilman Wells?
I move to approve the July 12, 2023 special council meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve July 12, 2023 special council meeting minutes as presented. Is there any discussion?
I just need to check to see if... I know that I was there.
Oh, who was there?
Yeah.
Jackie, Chris, Terry, Bruce.
It's okay. It shows.
So, Tony, Councilmember Lumen and Councilmember Gardner were not present.
Okay.
Okay. So do you have a motion to approve? Did I have a second?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
Well, I'll log myself out.
Would you like to do it, Verbal?
Yes. To both questions.
Online voting is closed. The motion passes with five DAs and two abstaining. And two abstaining with Councilmember Gardner and Councilmember Lumen.
All right. Thank you. The next thing on our agenda is to approve another set of minutes. Councilman Weisenberg?
I move to approve August 1st, 2023 regular council meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the August 1st, 2023 regular council meeting minutes as presented. Is there any discussion?
So Vice Mayor Steve Sanger and Councilmember Wells were not present.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
The online voting is open. Online voting is closed. The motion passes with five DAs and two abstaining. And two abstaining with Councilmember Wells and Vice Mayor Sanger.
All right. Thank you. The next thing on our agenda is to approve a catering permit. And Councilman Wells had her hand up first, I think.
I move to approve a 24-hour catering permit for Christie's Inc., doing business as Michael's Big City Bar and Grill, liquor license number 91, to cater the Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation banquet at the Platte Valley Community Center, Saratoga, Wyoming, on Saturday, August 19th, 2023.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve a 24-hour catering permit for Christie's Inc., DBA Michael's Big City Bar and Grill, liquor license number 91, to cater the Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation banquet at the Platte Valley Community Center, Saratoga, Wyoming, on Saturday, August 19th, 2023. Is there any discussion? Councilman Weisenberg?
Just want to say thank you for coming before the council, before the date.
Not on the date?
Not on the date. Again, I mean, the last one that was approved, it was the same situation. It's much appreciated to have that kind of time buffer zone.
Yeah, thank you, Michael. All right. Any further discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed. The motion passes with seven DAs.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Good luck, Michael. All right. So the next thing on our agenda is Item D. Councilman Garner?
I move to declare six donated 22 rifles, or 22 caliber rifles as surplus and send them to Woodward and Associates for a fall auction scheduled for September 16, 2023, with the proceeds from the rifle sales to purchase 28 shotguns to help support our youth sporting clays program.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to move to declare six donated 22 caliber rifles as surplus and send them to Woodward's and Associates for a fall auction scheduled for September 16, 2023, with the proceeds from the rifle sales to purchase 20-gauge shotguns to help support our youth sporting days program. Is there any discussion? And Jason, I guess you want to say something?
I could just say a few things. I just want to thank Ben Whitfield and family for donating these rifles. They are very unique rifles. And unfortunately, though, there's no use for our programs at the shooting range. But they were donated for us to use at our discretion. We are in the process of trying to expand our indoor and outdoor shooting ranges. And we're trying to increase the youth in our area to utilize our beautiful shooting ranges. So we're trying to expand our, well, implement and expand our youth sporting clays program with the ultimate goal to have some events, have some leagues, develop a club of youth. And then ultimately, we want to try to get the high school involved. We've already reached out. But we want to try to establish a high school sporting clays team, basically. So our goal with any proceeds from this auction would be to purchase some 20-gauge shotguns to help support that youth sporting clays. So just want to, again, thank Ben Whitfield and his family for donating these rifles. And we'll see what we can do with them.
Councilman Weisenberg?
What's your goal in mind as far as how many 20-gauge shotguns are you gonna want to purchase? I know this is just gonna be a portion of that. I'm sure the next thing will be in a capital expenditure and a budgetary item later on to support it more. But what's your goal overall?
I think our initial goal would be 12 20-gauge shotguns. Right now, we do have 12 12-gauge shotguns. And so we'd like to match that. Just for younger shooters, really, a 12-gauge can be a little intimidating. So that's our goal. I mean, there are 20-gauge shotguns that are reasonably priced, that are decent shotguns. So we can make our dollar go a little bit further initially if we would like. But we don't know. Gary Woodward is a pro at auctions, and he knows what he's doing. I met with him actually today at a Rotary Club meeting. And we were, I mentioned that this was coming before council. And he said, "Well, the sooner you can let me know what council decides, the sooner I can start advertising these specific 22 rifles." Because they could be a collector item type thing for individuals. And he gets people from eight, nine different states to come to these auctions. And he, in a way, I feel like he handpicks them for some of the items he has up for auction. "Hey, come to our auction. Check out these, you know, rifles or firearms that we have coming up." So if council wishes to declare these surplus, I told him I'd be getting ahold of him tomorrow and then he can start the process. Because I think the auction is in about one month.
Would this be a good time to get rid of those rifles that are stored at the police station that were used in the past for culling deer?
I wouldn't have an answer to that. I'm not aware of the current use or status of those. That would probably be better directed to Chief Ward, I would think.
They're not being used, is the point. There were special rifles purchased for that purchase, which doesn't have nothing to do with you. But, you know, there has been a discussion about getting rid of them. And this might be the time to get rid of them. Anyway, maybe one of us can check with Woodward's tomorrow and see.
We do have, just perhaps in reference of that, we do have some huge momentum going with our 1,000-yard range. And we've had some events recently with very high attendance from people in-state and out-of-state. So I don't know if those would...
These were bought for a specific purpose. And that specific purpose isn't being done. So to me, they should be considered surplus. And I don't think I'm the only one that feels that way. If you feel differently, speak up.
Well, we may have to check and see, because it was for the police department, what rules they have getting rid of weapons.
Well, their city equipment that was purchased for deer culling, they refused to do it. So that equipment should be sold as surplus. However, that happens. And since this is, and I'm familiar with Woodward's, and they do, you know, if you're gonna sell a firearm of any kind, this particular auction in this area is where you should go. Councilman Weisenberg?
I get and understand exactly what you're saying 100%. I agree. If we're not using them for what they're purchased for, we should look into the options we have for those. I believe right now, maybe Tom can have that discussion, maybe put it on as an action item if needed to declare those the same way so we can sell those at the same auction possibly if it was so deemed. That's my take on that. The other thing, I did have one more question for Jason, though. 20 gauges, you made the comment of 12 gauges being a little bit intimidating. 20 gauges can be the same way for youth also. Have you explored the option of a 410?
We have discussed that. And that is a possibility to purchase a few 410s as well.
So in this, this says for 20 gauges, right? So should we, I'm just asking for...
Is that in the...
It's in the motion for 20-gauge shotguns. So I just want to make sure, you know, this is actually gonna, would have to go to a purchase of a 20-gauge shotgun? Understanding, you know what I mean, would, if you're exploring that, could we make a friendly amendment to the motion?
My apologies if that's in the motion. My summary and recommendation is staff recommends council declare the six donated 22 rifles as surplus and send them to the Woodward and Associates' fall auction on September 16, 2023. My recommendation didn't say anything about purchasing 20-gauge shotguns. So I apologize if I put that under the motion.
So who made this motion? Would they be open to a friendly amendment to stop that motion at the end of September 16, 2023?
Yes.
Did you make the motion? Who seconded it?
And Councilmember Seadall.
Would you accept that as a friendly amendment?
Honorable mayor, if I could to reference what you were talking about, the other rifles. In talking to our previous city attorney, because the estimated value of each rifle is under $500, technically, we don't have to declare these surplus. Her direction to me was to bring it to council and get their approval or get their, you know, direction on what to do with these rifles. So technically, on those other rifles, I don't know the value. But if they're not $500 or more, according to our previous attorney, you might be able to confirm.
They are over, I'm sure.
If they're over $500, then we technically would have to declare them surplus.
And we should.
Okay.
That would be the proper way to get rid of really anything, a bolt or a nut, in my opinion. But, you know, anything that we get rid of should be declared...
It's come out of inventory.
Come out, yeah, declared excess and then put in an auction or whatever. But there's a procedure to get rid of stuff. And we would definitely want to follow that. I just wonder, because this, as you said, they come from eight, nine states away. If you're gonna sell a weapon, this is where. So I think we should have that conversation with Woodward's. Okay.
We could have that conversation with Woodward, making, try to find out if they're under $500.
Well, he would know. Yeah, Gary would know. Give him 10 minutes and he'll tell you within a sense of what they're coming to sell.
Whether we have to do something or if he can just sell them.
Yeah. All right. So we're back to the motion, which reads, "Move to declare six donated 22 rifles as surplus and send them to Woodward's Auction, Woodward and Associates, for a fall auction scheduled for September 16, 2023, with the proceeds, and stop there with nothing. I should have stopped." So that's what the motion is. Everybody understand that? So please, any more discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed. The motion passes with seven DAs.
All right. Thank you. Next thing on our agenda is an executive session. Councilman Wells?
I move to go into executive session at 8:19 p.m. per Wyoming Statute 164405, to consider or receive any information classified as confidential by law and on matters concerning litigation to which the governing body is a party or proposed litigation to which the governing body may be a party.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to go into executive session at 8:19. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed. The motion passes with seven DAs.
All right. Thank you.
That was pretty good.
Good. I mentioned that. Yeah, and I'm going to, but I don't...
I'll just walk this when I got full one, I feel good for now or then.
Okay.
The last one was, it was a pretty big. It was the whole on top of the pipe, it was the size of a dollar. You were liking it. It was caught early. Reported, we showed up, shut it down. So it didn't do too much damage to the road. It was maintained to like a ten by ten area. Yeah, I just. That's the nature of the beast. That it makes the same thing over and over again. The hole. You fix it. I think we want the next one. Each one is different. You don't know what's gonna be a challenge there. How, why? It's good, you just need some experience. Well. You have to, a lot of times too, you have to be. Think on your feet once you get down to it. And you find your length and the places. Get to the issue back. It's gonna get a lot of factors here to wait for you. The cold, the low temperature come in. And until then, you're trying to figure out what we need, the size of the lights. We, we created a trailer. Different size cameras. You know, we have the saw, we have the tamblers. Different size of clamps, so we take that. So when the time comes, it's, it's a matter of, do we need, do we need to cut it to replace it or is it just a repair? Take this out. There's a lot of ideas that we have. For our department. And how we move it forward since we've lost. So there's my list. And there's me. To provide. Depending on what had it where. Where you're at. Some air, she's willing to do. Different, maybe different things. Too bad, I hate when that happens. She, that might have seen. It's about to. Yeah, it's, so, then we have. So we're. You have people on vacation, takes days off. Well, some doctors, some time. Doctors. Yeah, so somewhere like that. My dad's not doing too good. He's not. Time off, because when that time comes, that's where I have my time. But yeah, it's, it's, I mean, that's why, I guess, I hit. Now it's down to four. If somebody takes a day off and they're sick, now you're down to three. And it's hard to get that, but good advocates in. I don't know if anybody's talked to you about. Our solution. Yes.
I was told today about.
It's at nine, so. Eight. It's, it's, it's. You know, see, find out very sure you can get the money. You know where it's coming from, it's, it's not. I hope it's not too late. Because I know this issue, you know. These business partners are. Right. The thing is. I understand the city. It's time like making the refiner. I understand for this to happen. Do you need me around?
Nope, we're good.
No protection needed?
I think they'll.
This guy's appreciated.
I don't know, I'd probably wait a few minutes. Make sure I get up.
I'm not about to.
No, I think we're good, thank you for being here.
Are you done?
Yeah, I appreciate it, so. Yeah. Your help on the chart was needed, so.
Uh, Stephanie, we're gonna find it.
Find the next step in that, and we'll get to it, so.
Well, I just told her, I think the step is let's get it to legal, make sure everything we have there is legal. So we have that legal review done. And then they can review it, knowing that it's, that what's in there is legal. But if there's something that they don't like, they would go back and.
Because they have to follow up the second time to.
Yeah, because if, if they. They may want language changed that is legally defensible language right now.
Yeah, but you.
And we change it. Change it now is no longer.
Well, thank you.
To that next step. It might, it might take until I'm gone from the city to get new policy approved. That's, that's part of it. It's how we've always done it. You know, it's part of the reason we all went, go, that's now we get their policies up there, whether it's a city, a county, a school district, a state, whatever. Because it's never been an issue until now. It, it has to go in the legislative body for approval, and it will be approved after you're even.
Yeah, we're gonna work at it, we're gonna get it through.
By that time, yeah, by that time, it gets to that point, the person that started that ball rolling is like long gone, and they're like.
Well, I, I have motivation to get it through, because on the finance side, it's exactly the same thing that you found. It is, overall, it'd be better for employees.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll keep pushing.
That's why, like I say, we're, we're trying to find ways without just going, no, this is the way it has to be done. You know, you eliminate one and just transfer that over to the rest of us, and it all works out. And it will work out. The way I, the way we were all talking about, I'm like, it's a win-win, you know?
The good thing about yours is it's in the enterprise form. Which isn't drawing on sales tax as much as.
Well, because I know if it was ever brought up to them, well, where is it gonna come from? And how raising it. See, that's the other thing, too, is nobody likes the fees to be raised.
Statutorily, if, if the cost raised, we have to raise our fees.
That's, and, and you have, they, they don't wanna do it because they don't wanna make their constituents mad. You know, I mean, that's politics. But at the same time, somebody has to be the bad guy, go, look, I don't like the rates to be raised.
It has to.
That's part of the reason why we're fixing a hundred and some year old system still, because nobody, no other previous council would take up the issue of raising the fees. It was every place. You know, and the other.
You know, that's water, but there's also the sewer side.
Oh, yeah, fix this thing. Okay.
But, but, the, the good thing about our system is it's, it's all gravity. Yeah. There's no, I mean, the absorption of treatment. It's where all the pumps and the, hey, you gotta get over the hill there, but everything.
Everything is gravity back, yeah.
So the water feeds gravity thing to the houses, to the property. And the sewer's also taken away the. There's, there's no point in getting it out of the plant, it's, it's all. Nature does it.
Yeah, yeah.
And oh my God, the people, the, the stuff that people put. You, you. And they think it's like, they think it's our fault, and I'm like, we're not responsible. Or I didn't put this in there, I, I know you did, but maybe your neighbors did. So we pulled out squirrels. Jewelry, toys. No. There's a ring, and it's funny, because the first time, I've been doing it for five years, working for the city, I get it, and the first thing we do in the sewer and pull out a titanium ring, and all I can think is, my branches. But yeah, I mean, at our sewer shop, we kinda have, I, I have a shelf of things that we have.
All the collection.
Of the sewer. I mean, granted, we, we spray it down with bleach. I think a squirrel. A squirrel, we've had, like I said. Diamond rings. You know.
Earrings.
Earrings, necklaces, toys, a lot of hot little cars. Little boys put the hot little cars in the toilet and flush it, it disappears. And then they're like, oh, what about the shiny stuff in mom's drawer? Or, I, but yeah, there's, there's.
Boys just love making things disappear.
Weaves. There's been weaves that have been put down there. But the biggest culprit is quote-unquote flushable wipes. So they, they degrade, but it takes days of like toilet paper, you get wet, and it's just, it tears apart. It, it takes a while for flushable wipes to degrade. And meantime, they get caught on grease and everything else down there, and then it clogs it up. A little bit of a root that's sticking through. Just, just anything. Captions and captures.
Those drugs before the roots go through.
And like I said, we'll, we'll run our, our sewer jet out there and come back. They still think it's our fault, but we didn't flush anything back, no roots, no, no nothing. And it's still clogged, and they still think it's our fault. Then we have. Well, I ran a hundred foot snake down there. Well, it's interesting, because your sewer line ain't a hundred feet from your house. So how do you put a, so, you know, there's. Well, they may only have thirty feet of line, but they don't understand, they just ran it down the main line. Well, not, not only that, too, they, they also think it's a straight shot. Well, the flow goes this way, and it'll come out ten feet and then forty-five, so it's even longer. So there, I mean, there's a lot of things that, and I, I just say, well, what we can use for the line? Well, I've, I've had snakes come up where you don't expect them. Roof vents, middle of this yard. Push its way up through the street, through the alley. So snakes, they don't, don't necessarily follow the line. They, they go to the path of least resistance, or wherever they get hung up and just aren't biting. Then you explain to them, say, you know, I know this is not what you wanna hear, but our line is clean. And then there's times where somebody calls, three months in a row, three times in a row. That's when we'll pull out the camera, the expensive sewer camera. And, you know, it, it has to warrant us to pull that out. It's not that we don't want to, it's, it's an expensive piece of equipment. So if it's a problem area, which we ran it, tell people, like, see the screen? Yeah? That's your tap, it's clear, there's nothing in our main. Before that. So it's. It's, it's on your service line somewhere, but yeah, we'll show them their tap, and they, they don't believe that it's like clear. Well, you gotta have good night. But yeah, that was. Well, I think that's a good thing to consider. We, we talked about that, and I was like, you know. One. It's gonna satisfy those that are still here. Two, it opens it up to those that are out there considering coming in and going. Well, this is what I make over here and go to where. I looked at a different one, because I, I was making fifty-five thousand in Amerigas. That was six years ago, five years ago. And I walked away from that and came to work for the city. I had a. It was a twenty, at that time, it was a twenty thousand dollar pay cut a year. But I was also looking at it as. I can retire from the city with a pension.
Yeah, eight percent of your salary.
Then, yeah, so that's what I was looking at.
Yeah.
The pension plus my social security.
Yeah.
When I'm in my sixties, and I don't have to work more.
Huge.
That's what I was looking at.
Yeah, that's huge.
And I, it was a good decision, because five years, I'm actually now making what I was making at Amerigas with less hours.
Yeah. Yeah. No, I, I've done it, it's really hard.
And, and, but most people now, they're, they, the younger generation, nothing wrong with it. It's not that they don't wanna work, it's. A lot of them know their worth, and they want, it's, it's all about the money now, not putting it somewhere, away for later. I don't, I don't do stock market.
I know it is all, but like you said, you start getting in my age, and it's like, it's all, I'm retiring.
Yeah, and, and my own, like I said, two months from now, October third, will be ten years with the fire department. And I will put my boots up, because my body, I turned forty-nine today, my body's like, you're not twenty-nine. You, you think you are, but you're not. My brain's like, let's do this, and my body's like, go ahead and see what happens. So I, it, it's hard, but I, I have to, I, I don't want to walk away, but ten years, so I can go honorary. Which, I, there's, there's a pension with that, I don't know how that works.
Yeah, there is.
But, uh. However, that works, when I turn fifty-nine, that's, that's like grocery money, that would be like food. But, um, I don't plan on leaving the city. I will have to do something stupid and get fired, which, you know. It's a possibility, you know, down the road, I may do a bonehead thing, not like to do it on purpose, but you know, you never know.
You never know.
Not that I would do it on purpose, I, I could make that thing out, but. But I actually like what I do. The, the hard, the hardest part is, it is dealing with the public. But the longer I do it, the longer it's. Sometimes it's what you say, other times it's, it's how you say it. The hardest thing is determining when to use, to use that. Because there, I mean, there's times where I'm like, come on now. Um, and then, you know, most of the time too, is you're like, I understand where you're coming from, I, I get it. But unfortunately, this is how it is. I, and, and, you know, even though I agree with you, this is the way it is, black and white. If you wanna change the code, if you wanna change something. By all means, you can have them ask me for my opinion, for what it's worth, I go, but until then, this is how it is. And that's the other thing too, is, um, the infrastructure in town. If, if a lot of these, um. Cast iron, ductile iron, and, and A C pipes. We can start. Changing them over and replacing them with PVC.
There's the pole.
When that starts to happen, we'll have less need to have eight people, eight people.
Correct, usually won't be out.
You know, we, we'd be able to, to go with one crew, because the only issues we would have at that point are valves, when the valves fail.
Okay. We can get those on a replacement schedule.
And, and those would also, when we're not pulled doing other things, we'd be able to go and do valve exercise, schedule like we do the sewer.
Yeah.
So in the summertime, you have one. So in the summertime, you have one crew of two doing the sewer maintenance. You'd have an area where they'd go hook up and just open and close the valve, you know? Just so it's, it's operated. And if there's an issue with it or if it breaks, well then that's where you know, okay, we're shutting these down and we're gonna fix this valve. Because that would be the metal and, and, but the PVCs would be good. But that's, that, I've already told them, that's not gonna happen and, and I'll retire by the time that gets done. Um, because it's not something that's gonna happen overnight.
And most of the resources are going transmission line.
And I've had people talk to me about that. Well, why don't they separate them? Like, well, if we can't get the water to come to the city, what good are the pipes in town anyway? You have to get the water to come here first and, and once you have that, then you can focus on getting it to the houses. Because worst case scenario, we have an issue with waters up in the tanks. We can build a, a temporary pipeline that comes down and, and dispense that water out to people. It may not get to the houses, but worst case scenario, we have the water. So that's, that's what I try and explain to them. That, that doesn't need to take priority. You know, that's, uh, that's kind of the, the hard thing that we, uh, my sister just found a, an old meter. Where she lives, they don't have meters anymore. She lives in Green Acres. Oh, and Green Acres has the master meter.
Master.
But one, from my understanding, at one point, each lot had a meter on it. And then when they went to the master meter, all the meters were obsolete. Don't bring anything. So I had to go, I had to explain that.
Maybe one just got me as a name or something.
Well, there's some, I think, old, old meter pits and old, when they became obsolete. It, we weren't reading the meters and it just, even though it went through the meter, so. But yeah, I'm, I'm hoping we get some good applicants.
I do too.
We're, we're, we're needing them. Like I said, there, there are several people that asked me and they were like, well, and I told them, I said, well, let me see what I can do. I can guarantee anything, but I can, all I can do is say, this is what we feel. Here's a solution.
Can I speak to this?
Yeah, so. Yeah, I'm gonna go ahead. I think this place is haunted.
What's no, maybe you're not my.
Not by mean spirits, but there's, there's, there's something in here.
This building's been around. This building's been a long time.
Not just this room, but the building.
I don't know. I live in a house that's built nineteen ninety-two and people say it's haunted.
I don't know, I just.
I'm just like, yeah, I guess, maybe.
Uh, uh, unless I hear.
Get out.
Or blood coming on the walls.
See.
They, they can knock things.
See some little kids walking around that you don't recognize?
But they can knock things over and there are gonna be spirits walking around. As long as they don't bother me, I'm, I'm just as freaking them out probably as they are me.
Right? You're in their space.
So. Is this a, a firm that you guys with that rotates with the city or?
Well, so we're just a small firm of three attorneys and, um, they needed somebody to, to take over.
Real representative until they have.
Basis until they can hire somebody who's a permanent resident. Working on this and it's actually working out pretty well because I can see how many got for it now. But since we're spreading it out between the three of us, it's not that much.
Right.
You have more, I don't know, energy in time. I was kidding, you don't have to stay in that actual three hours. I'm Addy, by the way.
I'm Mike. I'm, I'm the utilities supervisor.
So are you, did you have a conversation with On Point Construction about Starbucks water tower?
Yes, no.
Okay.
But I was part of, part of all of that.
Well, what, tell me, tell me your.
So.
Side of the story, so I know what's going on.
The original tap. I, the original drawings and everything. And I said, my concern is them touching that AC, which is cement pipe, asbestos, all of that, it's old. Um, it's a twelve inch line. It's a big one. So drilling into that to put in a tap, that's disturbing it. And I just assumed. We almost just put that twelve inch PVC in the front. And I go, my concern is, is doing that and there being an issue. And it, the way it runs, if we have the easement, but it's gonna get messy if that thing blows. PVC, don't have issues in PVC. AC, we do. I said, that's my concern.
What's AC?
AC is, um, cement.
Okay.
Um, it's, I don't know, but now I'm growing a link with A, but the C is cement.
Okay.
So the concrete.
Okay.
Um, and then you have your PVC and then you have your, your cast iron pipes, the metal ones. Metal ones, they blow hose. Same thing with cement. PVC is strong, stronger. Um, and is able to handle that. So that was my suggestion is to move it from going this way to go this way. I do not know, which I've been meaning that since the construction, everything died down. I would like to go and take a measurement of where the line comes from the building. Go to where the AC, that cement line would have been. And then run it.
The other direction.
The other direction where the actual tap went into. And see five foot difference, ten foot difference, thirty foot difference, which I honestly think it's.
There, there's maybe something of two hundred extra feet.
It's, it's not. I- i- it's, it's, I would say less than fifty foot difference, if that.
Maybe it's eighty, I don't know what they said, but.
So.
I thought you were going one.
Well, I, but she asked a question.
I asked, what about this?
Um, so that, it, so it's a matter of distance.
Yeah.
Um, so I don't know where that amount came from.
But you didn't say you have to do this. You said.
As far as me, I said, I, I don't, I, my concern is, is that having an issue and then having a water break there.
Would have had your service.
And then now we have to do all the work to repair it. The issues that come with that. That was my concern. Um, so I don't know if somebody else said that, but as far as me, I was like, this, I, my concern.
Was this just verbal?
As far as me, yes. So. Um.
Please don't.
Yeah.
My husband's. Everything's telling him I'm talking about.
But, uh.
They're. They're lying.
But yeah, I mean, if, if you wanna have that deeper conversation, we can just let me know. But as far as give the distance, that's fact. I mean, one way or the other. You too.
You too.
Happy birthday. Let's not talk about mistakes that happened long ago.
Here's a great one. Oh, Councilman Wells, shoot.
I'm going to come out of executive session for Wyoming statute sixteen four, four oh five at eight fifty-six PM.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to come out of executive session for Wyoming statute six dash four, dash four oh five at eight fifty-six PM. Was that right?
Yes.
Uh, any discussion? Uh, open online voting, please.
Online voting is open.
Yay.
Yay. My computer's.
My mind's working.
Who's the other one? I had Councilmember Wells.
And.
I couldn't say anything.
Wiesenberg.
I pushed a button, actually.
Oh.
Online voting is close and motion passes with seven yays.
All right, thank you. Um, we have a set of executive session minutes from July twelfth. I would entertain a motion to accept, uh, Vice Mayor Sanger.
I move to approve executive session minutes of July twelfth, twenty twenty-three, special council meeting as amended.
Okay.
As amended?
That's what it says.
Or, or supposed to be yes, present.
Just special council meeting.
I'm sorry, I.
Been a motion made and seconded to approve executive session minutes of July twelfth, twenty twenty-three, special council meeting. Is there any, uh, discussion? Oh, wait a minute. Yeah. There's none, uh, seeing none, please open online voting.
How did we do this when it went to three in the morning?
Yes.
We did a couple times.
Yes, we did.
Yeah. We were all.
And worked the next day or that day.
That day. Pretty attractive that night.
Online voting is close and motion passes with five yays and two abstain, and two abstain with Councilmember Gardner and Councilmember Loomin.
All right, thank you. I would entertain a motion for the next set of minutes. Um, Councilman Wiesenberg?
I move to approve executive session minutes of July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, regular city council meeting.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to approve the executive session minutes of July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, regular, uh, council meeting. Is there any dis?
How do you go so late?
Okay, so I feel a little better now. Is there any discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
Yes.
Yay.
That's funny.
Online voting has closed and motion passes with seven yays.
All right, thank you. Councilman Wiesenberg?
I would, uh, move to approve slow and steady law firm to hire special prosecuting council on behalf of the city of Rawlins.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to, uh, approve slow and steady hiring a special prosecuting, uh,
Counsel.
Counsel, uh, on behalf of the city of Rawlins. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Yay.
Yay, yay.
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 We're all yays.
Were you watching it too?
Yeah.
Were you trying, was, was your nine o'clock?
I thought we'd get out of here at nine and I, I thought I was kidding myself, but look at that.
There you go.
We just need a remote control. No.
Are you all set? Cause I, okay, so. Councilmember Wiesenberg was first, Councilmember Sealoff was second, and all, it passed.
Unanimously correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
I didn't hear Daryl, so I wanted to make sure. I was typing and I didn't get a chance to see.
All right, this meeting will be adjourned and our next meeting is September fifth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, same place, same time, and thank you all for being here.
I did. You know why? To sign them things because I didn't have a shitty ink pen.
Minutes.
Did Eric sign on? They were here. I don't know. No, no, I think we did. Yeah, I just signed this here quick. I only have one set though.
Thank you. You can't do it the normal way because Josiah turned it on.
Yes.
Are we offline?
Yes, you will.